There we go. Okay, everybody, thank you very much. That's not bad. Six minutes of audio visual. It's pretty good. We have a quorum of the Norwich Planning Commission, so we are going to get started. And
This way.
Start with the agenda. We can welcome our zoning administrator in a subsequent journal agenda article. Do I have a motion for the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion of the agenda as it was posted? All right. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right. Public comment for items not on the agenda?
There are no members of the public here.
No, we got Peggy.
Peggy's in the room, sorry.
Yeah, in the room. No, thank you for saying that, but Peggy is here. Do you want to make a comment, Peggy, or no? Okay. So we do not have, item two is covered. Correspondence. All the correspondence actually rolled up into agenda items, so there's no independent correspondence in the packet, I believe. So we can jump over that one. Item four on the agenda, lot consolidation update, and I'll just give a quick memory jogger and then hand it to Stephen to tell us where his head is at. But we had this discussion, we had the request from the listers relative to whether a merger of two lots, contiguous lots of same owner, only one of which had a structure on it or development, whether that required a permit. We had an opinion from both Kyle and I think Rod before him, saying that given some lack of definition in our zoning regs, that it looked, that it did need a permit. And we all didn't think it needed to, and we were going to do the minimum change required to make that clear and run that up the flagpole to the select board. That's the way we left it, I think, two meetings ago. So since then, Stephen has come on board. I put that on his, in his inbox. And so he's talked to people and looked up some things, and I guess I'd put it over to you, Stephen, to summarize in some pithy fashion where your head is.
Great. Thanks for that introduction and hello to everybody on the planning commission. Happy to be here and looking forward to getting into things. So yeah, so the question was posed by Jan, does a a merger of two lots in an effort to I think in some of the instances I've come across here to sort of reduce tax exposure, you know, sort of conducted through the listers department or initiated in the listers department. I, you know, I've sort of come to the opinion, you know, based on, you know, looking into some textbooks, talking with, you know, some Lister folks that I know, you know, sort of professionals, real estate attorneys in this, you know, in this world. I'm of the opinion that a merger does not require a boundary line adjustment process. That it's, it's, we shouldn't consider it a subdivision. And that there is sort of an operational solution to this issue. So, you know, in my research, you know, I came across this, the Vermont zoning and subdivision law, the second edition, which, you know, pretty simply states that merger can occur anytime lots, two lots are held in common ownership. Which sort of lines up with the way the Vermont Lister's handbook defines a parcel, which is any, all contiguous lands in the same ownership together with all improvements. So a Lister does have the discretion to look at lots held in common ownership as where the sort of boundary and extent of the parcel is defined by that ownership. In that way, effectively merging those lots. Municipalities have various policy in terms of how they consider that from a Lister's perspective. The Lister's perspective is always to discover the highest and best purpose for a piece of land and then assign, you know, assessed value to that, which you know, and there's so in that context, Listers don't need to necessarily consider property boundaries. Which means merger can occur anytime. The you know, there's sort of, there's, you know, in all things, there's, you know, various different contexts where this comes up. But you know, for the sort of general case, a Lister can consider a, you know, just considers ownership. So having, you know, sort of received that information, talked to, you know, a Lister, a friend of mine, and a few other people who generally sort of corroborated the idea that in practice, lots can be and should be considered merged. Looking through the sort of, you know, land use regulations within the region, you know, there's a few towns that you know, I think have a practice that we could generally follow. For example, the town of Hartford will, has a, you know, in their bylaws, in this first section of subdivision are actually pretty explicit about it, say lot mergers are exempt from subdivision regulations, provided that a deed merging the lots is recorded in the Hartford land records and a notice of intent to merge lots is submitted to the Department of Planning and Zoning Services, Development Services on a form provided by the department. So, you know, I've had numerous conversations with Cheryl and, you know, one of the issues that she sort of raised in this is that you know, they don't here, let me back up a second. It is the Norwich Lister's policy to value legally subdivided lots individually, even if they're in common ownership. I think that policy, you know, is a reasonable expression of best and highest use. So they sort of approach an assessment, if you, if you own multiple lots as you know, we are going to consider these individually from a tax, you know, assessment perspective. Which, you know, is fair policy. There's, there's no technical reason for them not to do that. For those landowners that dispute that assessment, there is a known path of appeal through the, you know, through the listers, which is to you know, make a grievance. If that grievance is not upheld or is upheld, it's moved to the Board of Civil Authority.
Stephen, Stephen, can I just ask a
Sure.
So that, what you just read from the Hartford regulations
Yes.
Was essentially what we proposed at this last discussion to add to our regulations to clarify the status. What is the
That would be, that would be my recommendation.
What is the negative to doing that? I mean, that is what we were proposing to do.
Yeah, I, from a zoning perspective, I don't, I don't think there is a negative. Really, the, you know, the the sort of shared goal between listers and, you know, sort of zoning and planning is the, you know, sort of maintenance and perpetuation of an updated tax map.
Yeah.
And, you know, consolidation deeds, while they get recorded in the land records, there isn't that piece that moves it to the attention of the planning department. I think with the addition of, you know, some form, which is the way Hartford does it, that, you know, gets you know, which is maintained and kept by the planning department, that loop would be closed. And that would be my recommendation in terms of, you know, an operational approach to what I think is mainly an operational problem. You know, there are a number of circumstances where, as you guys all know, boundary adjustment is the only remedy. There are circumstances where you know, there's a pre-existing subdivision legally created that you know, there's some interest in changing some of those dimensions, including annexation of some, where we might consider that a subdivision amendment. But, you know, the sort of general case of to merger your property in the town of Norwich, you need to go through a municipal planning process. I don't think that's required. I don't think a merger is actually a subdivision.
Jeff?
Yeah, I I didn't necessarily understand you were going to engage Stephen to recap stuff we recapped and so forth, but I appreciate the summary for a variety of reasons. So at face value, having done a ton of this stuff, I agree with Stephen's recommendation about how we change our language relative to mergers. I love the Hartford model that Stephen pointed out, having done that in Hartford as well. I think, Jan, to answer your question, which Stephen touched on, which is what's the downside? The only downside could be to the extent you're taking two parcels from some, a subdivision that's been approved by, you know, the town, and there are density allocations and so forth. I think there has to be a provision for amending that subdivision approval. To the extent you've got two existing lots owned by the same owner adjacent to one another that have not gone through that process. What Stephen read with respect to the town of Hartford, I would, I would fully support in terms of our language so staff can proceed accordingly. And by the way, relative to listeners, I'm not, I have no objection to the posture that our current listeners are taking. I have had some objections past listeners with respect to, you know, the value of lots that can't be built upon. So I think there's a critical element of that that has historically not been considered, and I can't speak to that relative to our current listeners.
Yeah, and I think
Just a second, Stephen. Ernie had a comment.
Oh. I just, I just wanted to say that I think Jeff had just mentioned something, and then I, I got sidetracked by other stuff that's going on. I think that I, what I wanted to talk, discuss was that mergers just completely undo a subdivision by their nature. I mean, once, once, and if I, if I remember correctly, maybe it's either a state law, or I don't know where I've got this. But um, once, once let's say two or more parcels are merged, there is no subdivision any longer. If anyone wants to subdivide that land, they have to go through the process of subdivision again. So I think Jeff's, I can't remember what Jeff said, that he's, that that sounded like we have to process something. The merger, the subdivisions are just automatically gone based on the merger.
Perhaps. Yeah, I want to follow up on that because if you have a five lot subdivision hypothetic that has a density allocation from the DRB and you merge two lots, there's an element that I think has to be addressed by virtue of that subdivision approval and how the density gets allocated. So that, in that context, I don't think there's a staff paradigm. What Stephen described to me is entirely a staff informed paradigm for merger.
Appreciate that. I guess you know, which is why I discussed the, you know, sort of concept of subdivision amendment. And, you know, I think that's both your points are valuable. There are generally, you know, there's a higher standard of review. There's also legal encumbrance on subdivisions in the forms of easements, right of ways. Civil matters.
Ernie had a question, but I guess I'd like to bring us back to, because we had a proposed solution on the table a month ago, which was to adopt language, which in my mind was essentially what you read from Hartford. To run that up the flagpole through the select board, preferably saying it was minor enough to not require a planning commission public hearing, just a select board. And so that's, that's what's on the table as a proposal. So if that's still sufficient, then great, we should be able to move on pretty quickly. Ernie?
I was just thinking that, that I, I think I agree to some, I agree it's up to a point anyways, that you know, keeping in mind what Jeff was saying about allocations changing, density allocation changing and so on. I'm not quite sure what, how it changes yet. I mean, I know that he's right in that regard. But I, I think that, that the, going through the whole process of just subdivisions, I'm not, I'm not quite sure how this would work.
So do we, back to my question, do we need to do more than that sentence, than add that sentence similar to Hartford's?
Yeah, yeah, and I, I think the answer is yes. I would, I would, to the extent there are other lots involved in the subdivision. To the extent there are not, then I think we proceed forward. To the extent there are, then I think this goes back to the DRB.
Just, just sorry. You know, in that context, what would be a reasonable trigger for the difference?
Well, so I want to be careful not to be specific to a current case that's being addressed by the DRB. But with, with respect to a boundary line adjustment that occurred, where does the density go? Neither staff nor the DRB address that. It was a simple adjustment, if you will. In this particular case, to me, if it's a five lot subdivision that has allocations with respect to open space density and so forth, that all has to be addressed collectively, even if you merge too, because do they, do they then get excluded from their rights, et cetera? So.
Yeah, I wonder, yeah.
So to the extent there are no additional lots involved, I say, let's kick this forward and present it this way.
I see. So that's really, I think it's coming out of the fore here, for me at least, that if we have what I was picturing, which is the simplistic version of somebody back in the hinterlands has two contiguous lots, they've had them for 20 years, and they're, they want to save money on their taxes, their kid's not going to move back and do anything with the other lot, they want to merge them. That would be solved by adding this language and no permit required, boom, do the deed, you're done. What we're saying is we're adding another category, which is if there was a multi-lot subdivision that went through a subdivision process and ended up with conditions, multiple lots, density calculations and so forth, that we need to address that and say, hey, you, you kind of have to go do a backwards version of that. You have to go to the DRB and make sense of that subdivision package again, if you merge. Stephen?
Yeah, I think, I, I agree, there's two different we're talking about two different concepts. One but yeah, I think in others, you know, subdivision regulations that I've seen, there is always the notion that any subsequent changes to an approved subdivision that's been approved by a planning process requires subsequent approval by the appropriate municipal panel. So we might already cover that case in our regulations.
So if two lots, if a merger of two lots in a recent or whatever subdivision triggers the same thing as any other change to that subdivision, triggers it to go back through the loop in our existing regulations, then we don't need to add anything. This, the merger would simply be another triggering event.
That is what I am suggesting, yes. I, and I, I mean, I can't, I'm sorry, I can't be definitive about that because I don't know Norwich's regulations offhand, but
Yeah.
I think
Did you have a new point, Ernie?
Well, I just wanted, when, when, when the discussion, this discussion's ongoing, but I would like some, to hear that sentence from Hartford again.
Okay.
Well, Jeff, do you have something?
I just listened to Stephen read the, and then I'll comment.
Okay, these are, I mean, this is essentially word for word. So lot mergers are exempt from subdivision regulations, provided that a deed merging the lots is recorded in the Hartford land records and a notice of intent to merge lots form is submitted to the Department of Planning and Development Services on a form provided by the department and accompanied by a copy of the recorded deed. So that's and it's really, it's sort of in the preamble section of their subdivision regulations as the sort of lone exemption.
Okay, Jeff?
Yeah, I completely agree with that. My, my only caveat is to the extent the two lots are not part of a larger subdivision. I want to, I want to really dumb it down, and I'm going to say this a different way. We, I've seen DRBs in this town since the DRB was invoked in around 2004, look at things like steep slopes and wetlands and other things to stop development. So I would hate to see the DRB, anyway. Backing up, I just want to keep this as simple as possible. So to the extent it doesn't involve a larger subdivision, then I want to adopt what Stephen read.
So if we put that caveat in, if in the language it says lot mergers are exempt from subdivision regulations, provided a deed, and provided that they are not a part of a subdivision that has gone through the regulations, an existing subdivision or something like that.
Just say
And that just pulls them out of that, and that means if you were part of a, of a subdivision, then you got to go through the loop-de-loop.
You're going to go through the what?
The loop of subdivision. The technical planning term. You're, the subdivision process again. That if we, if we basically say, if we say lot mergers, and maybe it's just simpler to say, lot mergers for contiguous lots which are not the result of a subdivision
Larger.
Are exempt from, dot, 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 and then just groups through, then you've only given it a green light for ones that are sort of simple, not part of a subdivision.
Okay, let me, let me ask about a specific scenario. Let's say there's been a five lot subdivision. And someone bought one, bought two of the lots and merges them. But they don't have, they don't own the other three lots. They bought them from whoever subdivided. So how does, how does that, how does that work with what?
That's my point. That's my point in a nutshell.
And I think, I, I think the answer there is if it's a subdivision that has gone through DRB approval, then that would require re, I mean, looking at the subdivision again, that is a, not a, a simple merger, that is a amendment to an existing subdivision.
So how, how far back, because when I was stating it, I felt the tired to say 10 years, 20 years. I mean, our lot here is part of a subdivision that was created 40 years ago. So if I wanted to buy my neighbors and merge, is that, is there a time limit, or is it simply it was subdivided at some point in history?
That's a good question. And I think we might look to Title 24, I think it's 44112, which covers the idea of existing non-conforming lots, often viewed as small lots.
Right. And whether We may not, we may not be, we may be totally conforming, but it's a 40, 50 year old subdivision.
Right. So I guess the the aspect there that I think is important is the idea of non-conforming in the sense that maybe that was created under, under different regulations.
Yeah. Jeff, Jeff, and then Ernie?
Yeah, so I hadn't thought of this. Great, great comments, by the way. So I'm going to get this wrong, but I think Hanover has an RR3 zone that basically has three acre zoning up to three lots.
Yeah.
And then a 10-year look back. So once you hit the 10-year threshold, a lot size changes at 10 acres.
Right, that's my point. It's the look back that solves this, that solves this problem.
Yeah, I just want to say, I hadn't thought about this. So it's not part of a prior subdivision, or to the extent it is, we should take a look back time.
Right, and I'm sure I can, you know, get background on what that is.
Okay.
Generally speaking.
Yeah, so I think that, that is what we're talking about in terms of the intent.
Yeah.
Is if it's a, a straight merger of something that what essentially wasn't part of a subdivision in the last X number of years, and we're going to look for precedent or whatever to figure out what X is.
Yeah, 2013, you know, the sort of last
The zoning regs. Ernie?
What, what I'm wondering is, is how does this affect the rights? A person owns two properties, they merge them, they have nothing to do with the other three properties, they haven't, haven't had anything to do with them either. Someone else owns it, either a developer owns the other three lots, or the other three lots are all owned by individuals or some, you know, other individuals, other residents. So I'm, I'm concerned that, that, you know, when you sort of tie what somebody does with their own property with somebody else's property, you know, with somebody else's ownership and rights, I'm, I'm sort of concerned about that, too. I
And yeah, can I, I
In mind, zoning and stuff like that is to some degree a control of people's rights, ownership rights, but the point I'm making is, is that you're tying, you know, the person who owns two with the person or people who own three together, when that's not the way it is. I mean, legally, that's not the way it is. Those separate, each deed has, is, has got its own life.
So I want to, let's let's try and wrap this up and we can hand it to Stephen with some specific marching orders, but I, we have other things to talk through too. Jeff?
Yeah, I mean, the problem I have with so many projects and the allocation of open space and the responsibilities of individual lots, you know, validates Ernie's point to me. So to Stephen's point, and what we talked about, to the extent this is part of a larger subdivision within an appropriate, and Stephen may come back and say, I don't, I don't, because it's been granted in the context of the DRB's formation since 2004, that might be the look back timeframe because of density, because of open space, rights of way, other things. Outside of that, language works in that paradigm, back to the DRB.
Yeah, and again, we may be able to handle those cases in language that already exists in our subdivision regulations for final plat review. Once, no, no changes after approval. And in this case, this would be a change.
Okay, so it sounds like the, we, we just added, we've amended our, our previous decision, which was essentially to add the Hartford language. We have just added a basically made that, made it a subset of that to say for lots that were not part of a subdivision, and we're going to get a timeframe recommendation from Stephen.
Yeah, yes.
All right, so you come back with that and we'll make a final decision on language. All right. So you come back with that and we'll make a final decision on language. But at this point, I think we've, we've hashed this twice. We, we understand the, the idea. Let's come back with some very specific language that we can do a final little wordsmith and be done with.
Sounds good.
Okay. Anything else on that topic?
You don't need consensus or anything, Jan, do you?
I don't think so. We talked about it before and we're not going to decide until he comes back with something.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, um, just starting out here. The board meets monthly, right?
Unless we need to do more.
Unless, yeah. Um, is there any objections to me, um, you know, sort of writing something up and distributing it, um, to the members prior?
So the, the short answer is no with certain caveats. It, it, I think we've got everybody trained, uh, but you put it in writing in the thing you send out anyway, which is do not respond. This is not a forum for conversation about the thing that was sent out. Um, and then it will go in the packet for the next meeting. So what you're, what you're doing is you're sending out a little early packet blurb, which will then be rolled into the full packet for the next meeting. And there is no back channel discussion. If somebody wants to talk to you one-on-one and say, I didn't understand this word, or let's talk about this issue, any one-on-one conversations are legitimate.
Yeah.
Email roundtables are not.
Right.
Okay.
No quarrels.
Yeah, nothing even remotely approaching a quorum, please. Thank you. Uh, okay. So jumping from giving Stephen a job uh, in a, in that context to doing our administrative duty, uh, to get a zoning administrator nominated, uh, I'll move to the next agenda item. Um, and topic. So yeah, I'd say it's specific for Vince, he's, he's remote.
So, um, I nominate Stephen as, uh, uh, our, the tenant org's zoning minister. Second.
All right. Stephen True, for the, for the sake of the minutes, Vince. All right, I've been moving a second. I have any discussion on that? All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. We have a zoning administrator. Kyle will be so happy.
He will.
Have you been working with Kyle, Stephen? Have you been talking?
Yeah, I mean, he's been signing permits, um, and, uh, you know, there was a, a matter, um, that we consulted about. He, he, yeah.
Is he on, my understanding is the, the contract we had was, was through the end of the calendar year. Is that true? So we have him for a little bit.
I can't speak to that. I don't, I don't know. Um, you know, I, I think, I think he was ready to get back to, um, his regional duties.
Yeah, yeah. But just if, if you need him, I think he's still essentially on contract.
Yeah.
Until the end of the calendar year, you can certainly probe him for specific questions and, and history on this case or that case.
Yeah, I, I, I certainly anticipate, um, you know, they, getting to, you know, know each other around at, um, Two Rivers, you know, sort of in the next couple of weeks. Where I sort of set that up with Kyle, um, but yeah, I
And I would just to, it's, it's off, it's off topic a little bit, but I, I I reminded people at the last meeting that the regional plan is being redone. They just had a couple of, of, uh, public hearings on that. So, you know, Stephen's gonna want to go and chat up the people at Two Rivers and, and review the regional plan. And then I would expect, you know, if anybody, whether it's a member of this group or any, any constituent, you know, if somebody on the Conservation Commission or the solar or energy or, or anybody says, wait a minute, there's this thing in the draft regional plan that I'm concerned about. Then by all means, put it in and we'll put it on the agenda and talk about it and see whether the, the planning commission wants to weigh in. I did my darndest to crash read 187 pages of, of the regional plan, the new one, and it, you know, I didn't feel the need to attend the public hearing, uh, but there's a lot of meat in there and it's certainly worth looking at.
Yeah. It's, um, the sort of legislative context has really changed. So yeah, it's, it's an important plan, this one.
Yeah. So I will, and speaking of legislative context, we'll move into the housing topic itself now. Um, but just to close the nomination. So given that the select board meets tomorrow, which means they couldn't put our specific result into the packet. I will attend the meeting tomorrow and give them the, the decision, the, the official nomination of this group into the select board, uh, for a vote.
I'm also planning on being there, so.
Yep, okay, yeah.
Case with me.
Yep, good. All right. So let's go to the next, which is, uh, zoning changes for housing. Uh, everybody had a homework assignment. Um, we also put, um, Stephen put that VL, uh, VLCT PowerPoint into the packet. Um, I asked to have Chris Katokey's summary from the Norwich Observer put in because I thought that actually did a pretty exceptional job. I was I was happy to read it because it actually did a very good job of summarizing and clarifying some of the issues. Um, so that all is by way of, of background um, to put the, put the topic on the table. Um, and I hadn't heard the term infill, what, what, what do you call it? Upzoning or, or the, the term that Chris referred to? Um, so what, what did people, um, what do people want to open with in terms of what you saw in diving into the zoning regs and how does this relate to those five or six bullet items that we had identified? Your hands up, Ernie, is that?
Oh, no, that's not.
Okay, Jeff?
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Jan, that, uh, Chris's, uh, summary was, was outstanding and I appreciate Stephen putting in the, the slides. Uh, I'll kind of leave it at that because it touches on a bunch of stuff that, uh, that, that we've been hinting at.
Yeah. I mean, just to, to jump in a little bit to the nitty gritty, because I went through the zoning regs in detail, looking for those five points and um, flagging the specifics of, you know, which districts could do this and not do this. And, and really, one thing I noticed for discussion is PUDs are really important in this topic, because even in a rural residential, you can do all kinds of things if it's a PUD. Um, so that while like mixed use is only a conditional use in, you know, uh, in one district, you can do a lot of, you have a lot of flexibility with a PUD in any district. And so I think that's something to put on the table. I guess the way to ask it as a question is if we're saying there are limitations, we're trying to promote housing, infill housing and so forth, and to the degree we're, we're positing, there are limitations. The PUD looks like the vehicle, so there must be something wrong with that vehicle if there's still limitations. Do you see what I'm saying? Jeff?
Yeah, Jan, I think, uh, I mean, since the town is RR for the most part.
Yes.
Um, your, your point about, uh, you know, uh, planned residential developments, PRDs, I think you know, the five bullets, the accessory dwelling units has some flexibility if you do a PRD. Multi-family housing is not allowed. Mixed-use development is not allowed. Eliminating the minimum parking requirements is not allowed. Higher density is, so two of the five could be addressed by a PRD. Three of the five are excluded by virtue of our zoning.
Okay. Now, some of that, so then this is another, just to kind of throw all the faucet against the wall and see what sticks, but so the there are a couple of those, or at least the multi-family one where the state regs have changed. And it's, I think it's in those slides, but it's in another thing I read as well, where you are not allowed to prohibit it from being different families. So
Without contending, because there's, there's no legal basis for what you're saying. I agree with you. I, I think we need to proactively say, how do we change our zoning and subdivision regulations accordingly?
Yeah, I would say the, the, the PUD regulations, if you were just reading them as written, probably can be modernized.
Yeah, I, I, so what I'm saying is our zoning districts preclude most of the PRD allowances outside of the commercial district, you know, the CI. So that I, I think regardless of what may be legal or not, based on the, you know, Act 181, we need to update our regulations to address all of these.
Mm-hmm. So is it, uh, so the, if I just look at, I was just trying to clarify, um, because I did flag this. I was, I was surprised at what you could do with a PUD uh, in, in certain uh, areas.
Jan, you mean PRD, planned residential?
We call them, I thought it was
The old form of PUD, it's, um, and units to deprecate it. The new term is planned unit development, which I believe modernized and extended the P, the PRD.
My dilemma is outside of Norwich, PUD implies other uses than residential, not in Norwich.
Yeah, I mean, and the
Okay.
I, and I am, I am trying to be very specific in terms, I love the PUD concept. But our regulations don't allow, other than the CI district, arguably, uh, mixed use or multi-family.
That's where I'm confusing myself. Sorry, I just was looking at our subdivision.
So Jan, if I can cut this short, if we could say,
Oh, go ahead.
Let's look at our districts and say, how do we engage all five of these components to update our zoning and subdivision regulations? Zoning ordinance in subdivision regulations.
Yeah, so, yeah, I, I agree. And, and that's what I did. And sorry, I was lost in the subdivision regs when I meant to open the, the zoning regs. But if I look district by district in the zoning regs, uh, under permitted and conditional, I don't see either of these, but I do see land unit developments, PUD. Uh, multi-unit dwelling may be permitted as a PUD in RR.
Multi-unit, multi-unit, Jan, is not multi-family. Nor is it mixed use. So multi-unit is, uh, more than one. And, and so to the extent the, uh, the gateway project that Earl Simpson did was townhouses side by side by side, not multi-family, but multi-unit. And not, so multi-family means you could have different people on different floors and, and different sides.
Yep. And that to, back to the state point, that is something that now we have to allow. We're not current, but to be current, we would need to explicitly allow that. And so if I look, it keep going down the districts, once you hit village business, you get as a conditional use, a mixed use. That's the first, uh, the first time one of those shows up as, uh, a, a conditional or permitted use. And then once you get to commercial industrial, multi-unit is permitted and mixed use is conditional. Um, and that's, you know, that, that's really where it shows up other than the multi-unit in a PUD context. Um, so that was, that was one thing. That's one thing I noticed reading it. And then the other thing that relates to the state regs, I'm curious about how, there are a lot of things that say, oh, you get an extra floor, you get an extra number of units if you have municipal water and septic. And it doesn't say specifically water only, no septic. And then we have a village designation. So where do we stand? And this may again be kind of a specific task for, for Stephen, uh, or we may know. Where do we stand in our village with a village designation and water but no sewer as it relates to the state laws, the new ones? Jeff?
Yeah, I, I think, uh, uh, we, we've had this battle with the select board, not saying good or bad. We need a village designation and/or a town designation and/or a neighborhood designation. And I've, uh, so, so there was a, Vital Communities did a, uh, a legislator discussion like a month ago, and I was petitioning Allison Clarkson to contemplate expanding consideration of the language in this act or one utility like downtown Norwich. Uh, so, so that, uh, here, my dilemma is there are very few towns in the state of Vermont that have both water and sewer. So the law actually looks at benefits to very few communities in this, in this state. Yet in our community with our, with our water infrastructure, which is unique and wonderful, to the extent we can do onsite wastewater and/or, uh, hypothetically, something like Route 5 South or River Road, where there might be municipal utilities. You know, the gloves are off in a neighborhood context.
Stephen?
Uh, yeah, I think that's a really fair point and, um, also a really good reason to, um, for us to really pay attention to the regional plan. Um, that's, uh, being covered up right now. Because, um, yes, this sort of initial push from Act 181 really, you know, provides a lot of exemptions for cities, towns, municipalities with water and wastewater. They are setting the ground for, you know, a absolutely paradigm shift in, uh, location-based jurisdiction. And as, you know, I think the, you know, tier one A um, places have been easily identified, but over the sort of next few years, regional planning commissions have been mandated to, uh, you know, create future land use areas where they are uh, you know, will come to understand what are tier one B locations. And, um, what's interesting there is they're already, you know, the notion is we're going to we're going to go through a process of, you know, classifying these. And what, the only thing they call out in that process is, you know, a look at soil suitability. So, um, soil suitability is going to weigh heavily on, um, you know, sort of future designations. Um, for those areas in the state that are outside of a municipal, you know, municipal, uh, utility reach. So we're at a really good time and place to, you know, sort of tackle these ideas.
So Stephen, are you saying that, um, we have the, the what is, so we have our current regs. We have a new environment based on 181 as it currently stands and theoretically the current regional plan.
Yeah.
And we could look, should look at updating our regs for that environment, but we also have to look for, to update our regs based on proposed new regional plan and possible furthering of 181.
Yeah, and, and if I could just follow on with that a little bit, um, so the regional planning commissions, uh, had to come up with um, future land use areas for, um, you know, for their region and, uh, which um, you know, for their region and uh, which Two Rivers has done, identifying that sort of Route 5 corridor as a mixed use area, which doesn't really fit into the new designations. And, you know, the town center uh, of Norwich. As um, you know, sort of participants in the uh, new paradigm of Act 181, location-based jurisdiction. So the, the, those areas have, have been identified at a regional level. There, I don't think the tier one B has been fully codified.
Stephen, can you back up just a second and give me a definition of location-based jurisdiction, please?
Sure. Um, to, to the extent that I understand it, is um, you know, a rewriting of Act 2, Act 250 jurisdiction. Um, to sort of move away from the, what is it, the 10-5-5 rule? Uh, to sort of lessen restrictions, or act 250, provide Act 250 exemptions based on your location. So the jurisdiction of state uh, control over municipal uh, zoning and planning, planning and zoning becomes more centered around, you know, the designations within your municipality.
Okay, okay. And that's the tiers.
Yeah, and it, it's pretty well covered in that BLCT.
Yeah, I saw that. I just was trying to, it, when I did the first pass of looking at it, it it sounded like the vast majority of those definitions didn't apply to Norwich. It just, you know, and that's because a lot of them were comma with water and sewer.
Yeah, and I, I agree with you. I, I, I agree with you, like the sort of um, actual items from, you know, stemming from Act, Act 47 and the Home Act and Act 181. Are very explicit for certain jurisdictions, but they are setting the ground for, you know, jurisdictions like ours, which don't have, um, you know. And I think that what it looks like the solution is going to be is, you know, a sort of um, review of septic capacity across the state. So septic capacity is going to be uh, very heavily weighted in this future paradigm.
Okay. Jeff?
Yeah, a couple of things. I appreciate what Stephen said at various levels. Um, the um, or I want to come back to the regional planning commission in a minute. So one of the things we talked about last time was the concept of uh, law classification in uh, in towns like Hartford, Lebanon and, and Hanover, where you've got water or sewer or both or neither. And so the density paradigm in theory could be a function of that. And, and that's more or less to me what Stephen was saying with respect to, you, you know, what is the infrastructure support? What's the capacity? Uh, I don't think uh, 181 addresses that fairly statewide, which, which again, I think mirrors what, what Stephen said. That said, I, I haven't gone through, I haven't done the uh, the quick look-through that the regional plan uh, updates as proposed, but I, I think it's important that uh, we as a planning commission, uh, ma- maybe it's a subcommittee, I say that tongue-in-cheek. Uh, maybe a couple of us, Yon, approached Peter with Stephen to talk about how we contemplate these things. Because uh, uh, we, we have some really important infrastructure considerations. Uh, not only in, in terms of we're, we're at the center of our collective growth center in both states, but we have an amazing water supply system and we have amazing access to other utilities to the extent uh, we could contemplate either town designations with village and neighborhood designations, which then would affect Act 250. Now let me, me comment on Act 250 quickly. Um, the, the, the notion of the benefits of this is in our town, to the extent we have uh, commercial use on a, on a parcel, 10 acres or larger, or 10 units or more. Uh, these revisions would allow um, uh, I would say leniency or a support from the state uh, for projects. So, so that ultimately is what uh, the Act 250 tiers contemplate is how, how do we contemplate our need in the state and balance things like affordable housing? Uh, you know, where we are with respect to the growth centers or the town centers, village centers. And uh, and how much pain and suffering we have to go through for a permit.
Specific question, is that really specific to housing?
It is. It is. Right now, you're subject to all 10 criteria in this town or any zoning town with uh, 10 units or more. You've got to address myriad criteria. To the extent these designations apply, the, the criteria threshold considerations are diminished.
Yeah, uh, which is the, you know, the heart of location-based jurisdiction.
Yeah.
And we, we, so we do have, we do, I mean, there is a town center that has been designated for Norwich. There's a mixed use area that has been designated between Norwich and Hartford.
Did, did, this is a quick follow-up. So we didn't follow up on our village designations, so.
That's, that's.
We, we have, we have an active, we have an active village designation. Pam, okay. Pam pulled it out, Pam pulled it out for me and, and confirmed what was brought up in a previous meeting.
And that concept is also going away or being, it's metamorphosizing.
Cause that, it, it's flagged, when you go to the map that goes along with 181 or whatever, the, the you will see the Norwich village flagged as in some way uh, designated. Uh, it's just not clear at all what it means relative to only having great water and, and not other identified infrastructure.
Yon, my question is, uh, to the extent we're going to petition the RPC, uh, how do we do that?
Yeah, because I did, I did, I did want to follow up on that. I think for, for all the various reasons we talked about getting uh, getting in early with the discussion with Two Rivers, it sounds like a good idea. And I don't have any trial, I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a subcommittee issue at all if we just said here are one or two planning commission members that want to join Stephen in a preliminary discussion uh, with the regional commission relative to how this, how 181 and all these issues relate to Norwich.
Well, Yon, as uh, as chair and vice chair, how about we do that and invite Stephen to join us?
It's my man. Stephen?
Can I, can I, I, I agree with that, but uh, would like to propose a, a different approach. Should I meet with them as a sort of uh, innocent? And uh, then.
There's no need, but feel free. I, I, so if, if Stephen wants to reach out to Peter, great, do it.
Okay, when I do, when I do, I will, um, I will uh, set that next meeting up. Cause I do think it's, I, I do would want, um, you know, this.
I just, yeah, I, I'm looking at it from the, sort of from the chair and the, and the sequencing point of view for this group. How do we move forward? How do we learn enough to, and, and again, if you're talking about, well, there's this law that, and this regional plan that already put us in need of revision of our own regs. And then we have expectations of new regional plan and new state laws. How do we, you know, what do we do for the next two years, other than, you know, wait for a petition or an applicant
Yeah, yeah.
thumped on and then sue us and take it to appeal? That's, that's the question I want to help with.
Yeah, I, I hear that. And um, you know, to the, to the extent that areas outside of tier one A um, are, you know, set down already in concept, there is absolutely very little rule setting around them. So I mean, I, I don't think we need to react to, you know, this sort of future land use. Per se, though we should react to the fact that um, you know, Act 47 has direct um, rule changes for municipalities. Act 21 has direct rule changes for the sort of designation that we have right now, which is a municipality largely outside of tier one A.
Mm-hmm.
So.
So we talked, we talked briefly, Stephen, about this uh, in the last couple of weeks of you taking the effort to give us a summary of current misalignment, if you will, between our regs and state, current state and conceivably regional uh, laws. Because, because to the degree that it may be shifting out in time, I would at least like to say to, to see a list. Here are the, here are the six ways you're already out of alignment. Uh, and then we'll decide whether we deal with that or something is so, so obviously going to change that we should wait for it, but at least let's know where we stand now.
I agree, yes. And uh, you know, to that, yeah, I feel like I'm, I have done, you know, quite a bit of background now on Act 47, 181. I've also, you know, the Department of Community Development publishes, you know, a, a log of legislative changes that goes all the way back to 2004. Um, and I sort of reviewed that. So from a legislative perspective, you know, I, I think I know what we need to look for. I just need to then now bring our land use regulations into that. So um, I think, you know, over the next couple of weeks, in advance of our next meeting, I will prepare that summer. That really looks at, you know, from, from the lens of our current land use regulations. Where specifically within that, we need to include these new items to the best of my ability.
Good. Jeff?
Yeah, so to, to me, the Two Rivers thing is uh, is a bit on the esoteric side, although important. So I, I have no objection to Stephen reaching out to, to.
I agree with you.
Anytime. But I want to do this, you know, uh, contemporaneously with, with you, Yon, and Peter and talk about. Cause to, to me, the planning commission is going to drive this train. Having said that, what you just touched on is really important and a follow-up to what we've talked about in our previous meetings. So to the extent we have a zoning administrator who can look at our zoning ordinance and our subdivision regulations and say, you, you know, what are the things by zoning district, by, you know, specific section, uh, et cetera? What needs to be brought up to date? That to me is a fantastic use of Stephen's time. And I'm just looking at things like four stories, because our zoning ordinance doesn't allow that. But uh, all, all of the elements that Stephen may suggest that we consider for uh, for, for regulatory modifications. I think that's a great use of time in the near term.
Yeah, and there are a handful that are outside of Act 47 and Act 181 that, you know, we need to attend to. And um, if we're going to do the housing-oriented bylaw modifications, we should do all of the mechanical ones that we can at this time. So.
Right, and that's a good, that's a good way of putting it. I think in my mind, we have, and this has always been my question as we look at all the, all the things that come across uh, as possible changes. We're trying to bundle
Yeah.
a bunch of things together. We don't want to wait two years and come up with a massive bundle. Uh, but we don't want to be nibbling away at it one at a time. So let's look at, like you said, the, the regulatory and then there are uh, like those, the, the six, five or six housing-related ones that may be not forced upon us, but we chose in a new context to do something about it. Let's get a, get an overview. Let's get a picture of that bundle uh, clarified and use staff time to get it clarified so that we can move forward. Great. Okay. So that, that sounds like a useful chunk of work and a, and a good charge for the, for the upcoming, the next meeting.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, let's, let's leave that one for now. I think that's a, it's a good one. Um, and I, you know, on the regulatory side, it's not just going to be housing-related. Uh, it, it, it may be, that's been what people have been talking about it. We will then just for, from your point of view, Stephen, and I know you, you, you've got solar sighting minutes and so forth that you can go look at, but the, the solar sighting piece will be another thread, another input of proposed amendments. In this, in this case mostly to the town plan, um, coming in from a year's worth of work in that subcommittee.
Right.
And so again, we're gonna, I would hope in the coming few months to define and get them to be clear and then very clear so that we can move them. Here's what we want to do with the zoning regs, here's what subdivision regs, yes or no, town plan, you know? And we are actually talking about specific amendments and starting that debate for real.
Yeah, and it would be good to have as little debate around these as possible, right? Because, you know, I, I, I don't, I wouldn't see these, you know, this, this bylaw process as, you know, simply a modernization. We're not, we're not trying to uh, you know, uh.
Well, we should at least distinguish, we should distinguish policy changes from modernization. We may want to do some things that are
Yeah.
contentious or at least subject to, to debate. And then there are going to be some that is like, no, we, we have to do this or this is just modernizing. But let's clear which is which and, and.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yeah. And we don't have, I guess the word I was looking for is reform. So we don't have to uh, necessarily reform our bylaws at this point.
Right, unless we choose to or where we choose to. Yeah.
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yeah, I, I'm given, given uh, uh, what's the right word? Uh, the conflict we've seen uh, since uh, in, in the last 10 to 15 years on these topics. This isn't about pro-growth, no growth, et cetera. And it's important for me to say that the planning commission would like our zoning administrator do the following. So he's got cover. This is what we want to be done. And with respect to the five bullets that are here, ADUs, multifamily, mixed use, you know, eliminating parking, higher density, et cetera. As you review zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations, things like building height, for instance, mu- uh, how might we look at these uh, I'll say ordinance, the, the ordinance and regulations under our cover to, to modernize, uh, whatever the right word is. But it, it's really important to me that it's us driving this train. So there's no finger pointing.
Right.
And to that point.
Understood. Yep. That we are, we are asking staff to do that. We're not, um, you know,
Yeah.
him come back out of the blue saying, here's what I want you guys to rubber stamp.
Correct.
Yep.
Correct.
Yep.
And I, you know, I, in this, I will endeavor to cover, you know, all aspects that, you know, we can look at at this time due to legislative change or, you know, general modernization.
Yep.
And bring them to your attention, not just the.
That's good. And, and I think Vince, the, the minutes can, can reflect that to say that the the planning commission has asked staff specifically to, to perform this exercise on these topics, uh, both in modernization and, and alignment with uh, current state regulations as well as these specific topics uh, on housing. Um, we're asking him to do that.
Okay.
All right. Okay, let's move uh, to capital planning, which is kind of a a distinctly new and broad swath of a topic that, that we can uh, jump into. Now, just a little bit of background, I, I gave it a little bit to, to when I sent out, and I've been talking with, Christian has been more involved in this in terms of getting copies of the, of what I've been going back and forth with uh, Pam Smith and others, just because the two of us were the ones uh, designated as capital planning representatives. So I approached, uh, after the last meeting, I approached Brennan and Pam Smith, the select board chair. And I said, planning commission wants, thinks we should up our game on capital planning. Uh, we believe that the most successful method of doing that is going to be a broad uh, interdisciplinary uh, group, including select board. town staff, town manager and his staff and planning commission. And so we would welcome the beginning of that conversation. How do we, how do we start that? Um, Pam Smith kept it pretty limited and she said, I think you should submit, the way to start that conversation is to submit the official subcommittee request form uh, to the select board. And I said, but I don't want to, planning commission subcommittee, I think, and we think that it should be the select board appointing a group of which we'd like to be a part and these other members. So it's, I want it broad. I don't want to. But she said, no, I understand that. The best way to start the conversation is to submit the form. So I did. You can see it in the select board packet for tomorrow. Uh, it's very simple, you know, capital planning uh, with a, you know, create a long-term capital plan that feeds into at uh, uh, annual budgeting process. And then I suggest the members, here are the two from the PC, there should be some from the select board, there should be some from town staff. And I put that in as an official subcommittee request form. Um, from what I can tell on their packet and agenda, it's not on the agenda and it's in correspondence, which is like item thirteen on the agenda. So I'm not sure I'm gonna make it all the way until they get to correspondence. But I will revisit it on video and uh, the minutes to see uh, if Pam, I know Pam is supportive of the, the whole idea of upping our capital planning game. Um, so I think she'll take this ball and run with it a little bit and see whether there's interest at the select board. I was in conversation with Marcia about um, basically the subcommittee forum and, and clarifying members of the solar sighting subcommittee and so forth. And I mentioned capital planning as a, as an example of a a different kind of a group than the solar sighting subcommittee. Her recommendation was uh, and I'll put it in the pa- I'll put our correspondence in the packet for our next meeting. But she, she took it from the statutes that are clearly enable the planning commission to have a capital plan section of the town plan and uh, and do that work. And she said, you should go ahead and do that and then submit that as a town plan amendment to the select board. Now, we can talk, we should talk about this. My personal feeling is that's not a recipe for success. I don't want to spend months talking about this in the planning commission only to open it up to a broader audience and have it go nowhere. Uh, so that's, that's the background I've had over since the last meeting. Jeff?
Yeah. My first comment is thank you for going to the dentist for all of us. My next comment is I completely agree with you that it is critical. Uh, so, so for me, having done this in the town for some decades, it's critical for staff and the various agencies involved to, to be working on this together. So I, Jan, I think you, you nailed it in terms of what you said. For us to meander about without a collaborative approach. So, so, you know, if I was town manager, public works director or select board member, I'd be thanking you and kissing you on the lips for this help.
Please. Um, yeah, I mean, and that's, so I'm curious why, why, you know, if, if Pam, well, I liked Pam's response the better in the sense that it was like, yeah, get it into the select board and we'll, we'll run it up the flagpole. So to some degree, I'm, I'm waiting to see how that conversation goes at the select board. I, I clearly think that um, that the select board and the town manager and the finance director and so forth would welcome some help setting context for these annual planning discussion, annual budgeting discussions. Um, but it remains to be seen.
And it's certainly within the remit of a planning commission. Yes.
Oh yeah. It's squarely number six or whatever on our duties.
Yeah.
Duties and powers. So I guess the question that I would have for this group is should we do anything in advance of that broader conversation?
But so Jan, we're obligated to do it by, by statute. But I don't think it's immediate or imminent. Let, let's see if the select board uh, is resuscitated with the smelling salts and, and then proceed accordingly.
Okay. Others? Stephen?
Um, I, I just wanted to bring something up that is uh, adjacent to uh, this conversation. Um, what, you know, you know, this is the first time, you know, we've all uh, worked together, uh, you know, I'm still sort of uh, trying to, you know, stretch out and, you know, see where I can help. And um, I, I had a grant application come across my desk um, from Vtrans that uh, had its, you know, sort of s- s- specific uh, funds set aside for uh, plant, planning activities in terms of stormwater infrastructure. As just sort of a general ask, it are, you know, is that sort of a suitable activity uh, for, you know, for my time for, from your perspective? Um, you know, this, it's, you know, grants are um, you know, it can be a, a two-edged sword um, for municipalities. Um, and you know, I'm certainly not very far down the road, but you know, I think that, you know, a planning study around um, you know, asset inventory of wastewater infrastructure in some or all of the town would be a, a valuable data set for a capital planning uh, effort. Um, basically is, is it okay with you guys if I investigate and look at these things?
I hear you. I guess my caveat, and this may be similar to what Jeff will bring up, but we'll say, you know, my caveat is to the degree that we just said, this is gonna work the best with all the parties that should be at the table at the table. Uh, the capital planning broad topic. Um, I, my concern would be that if you leapt into the fray of stormwater infrastructure asset planning, you're gonna step on toes of other department heads that might think that's their thing.
I did speak to Chris Kaufman about it.
Okay.
Uh, already. Um, it, you know, this is all you know, very early stages, but um.
So that's, that's the bare minimum. If, if that conversation is happening with the town manager and the DPW, then, you know, and then I, then it's almost a, a kind of uh, who's got the hours to work on it? Is it worth working on? I don't, I don't want you doing grant applications for somebody else's projects just because you happen to have time. But in the context of planning, if it makes sense, then we could talk about it. Jeff?
It's, yeah, it struck me as, sorry, it's something that might have a lot of overlap between the town functions. Um, and sort of got to the idea of capital planning. Um, but heard.
Hmm hmm.
Um, you know, and certainly the um, a sort of collaborative uh, approach to capital is the best. Uh.
Jeff?
Yeah, it's inconceivable to me that we would have a zoning administrator that would be thinking forward in this fashion. I'm so grateful. Having said that, uh, uh, you know, sorry, Bob. Uh, Transportation Advisory Committee with Two Rivers, Rita does a phenomenal job. I can't remember Vermont, is it LTF? Yeah. New Hampshire's LPA. But all these different grants. I mean, my dilemma is uh, how we've had this fractured government where we had a, a shared use path from Norwich to Hartford. And uh, and a town manager said to our zoning administrator, drop the grant against the planning commission's object, objections and the select board didn't weigh in. We had a uh, uh, in fact, RSG did this wonderful study for a, a sidewalk, uh, you know, along the Church Street corridor to, to uh, Carpenter Street. And for reasons I can't comprehend, the select board abandoned it. And, and I'm, I'm trying to be polite. So, so the broader community question is, to the extent Stephen has uh, you know, Brennan's support, like, you, you know, if I were in Chris's shoes, all the crap he's got to deal with, I'd be delighted to have you say, how can I improve the infrastructure, look at grants? And, and um, uh, my experience with uh, myriad uh, municipalities is it's typically this planner's zoning administrator that's putting these things together in concert with willing fools like us. Uh, so to the extent you trip over any of these, I think it's a fantastic thing to bring them up, chat with us. And if we can support you with, 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 with staff, with the select board, uh, I, I just love this notion.
Yep. Okay.
Sorry for.
Any other thoughts? I mean, I think it's a good, on the capital planning side, I, I guess I'd ask, you know, other members, uh, now that we, we've had three or four good topics come up here, a lot consolidation, housing, capital planning, infrastructure. Um, and we're getting a sense of what we might ask our new staff for. We've been, I've been at this eighteen months. And this is the first time I've had this opportunity. So I would, I would welcome anybody else's thoughts on uh, that topic of, of how we, how we embrace our newfound riches. Vince?
Uh, I was just gonna kind of circle back to, to um, your discussion with Pam about how um, to, to approach, whether it be a subcommittee or I guess a larger, just overseeing of everything, capital planning committee. And I completely agree that you don't want to, you know, spin your wheels and have no power once you get up to the top, but just trying to think of ways to make that work, because it almost, it makes sense in a way to just have the planning commission focus on planning commission related things and you and Christian be involved in a higher up, top-down model. There's not necessarily any reason or interest that we would need to be involved with how money is spent inside Tracy Hall or anywhere else, anything else like that. So I, 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 I agree with what you're with, with like, a- as, as things are right now. I, I agree with you that, that doesn't seem like it's worth the time and effort to get into it, but it, it seems like a pretty good path going forward if it can become a more official, uh, I guess, system of, of subcommittees, I guess.
Yeah, I think, I think what you're saying is that there's a there's a nested model that would be best where there's a broad, very much across the, the, all the parties in town working on this. And then within that, there is a more PC specific, how does it fit within the town plan? Uh, the capital component of the town plan, and then that is, is nested within the broader conversation. That's the way we want to be working this, because this is not something we do once and we're done with. It's something that rolls along and gets adjusted. And so we'd like to have it where we, we amended the town plan to include a capital plan element and that had something to plug into in the, the townwide, the town manager had a place for it and the select board had a place for it. And, you know, that's where we want to get to.
And, and right now you would be the only one doing, you know, the PC would be the only one just doing that. And I understand how that's not.
Uh, well, other than the select board's annual budgeting process where they say, okay, we gotta do Emerald Dashboards and we gotta do Morley and Bridge and we got, you know, and Tracy Hall and, and there there's some semblance of capital plan going on. It's just doesn't have context, doesn't have multi-year context. Jeff?
Yeah, I just want to remind folks, we've talked about this before, but Hartford, Lebanon and Hanover, albeit larger communities with larger staff and stuff, et cetera. They have a capital improvement plan where uh, so Lebanon's a council, select boards in both Hartford and Hanover, where there's this list of projects planning. And to the extent uh, the, the governing body is going to consider them, uh, this plan goes forward to Conscom, Planning Commission, the Bike Ped Committee, you, you know, the Tree Committee, et cetera, for everyone to weigh in. And I'm not being facetious. And, and so I, what I don't want to do is burden the town of Norwich with uh, you know, more work, but I, from my standpoint, from an administrative perspective, and I'm thinking about if I'm a town manager or public works director or however I'm going to implement this process as a select board member, what are the things that we have on the table right now? Like, you know, are we going to take over the, the, the water system from Norwich Fire District? What do we do with the sidewalks? Are we going to do road maintenance? You, you mentioned some other things, but creating this matrix is something that uh, that we could contemplate ourselves, but more holistically, if it's led by our governing body and then folks weigh in, you know, I say Conscom because we had a lot of trail maintenance and, and, you know, uh, you know, uh, you know, uh, open area maintenance, that sort of thing. Uh, so anyway, uh, our surrounding communities do this. We don't have the same level of staff, but we could still nonetheless address it.
Yeah, and all, you know, um, all of our plans necessarily involve infrastructure, public infrastructure to some degree. And so, yeah, capital planning is important um, aspect of planning in general.
Yeah, I would certainly like to, to start just picturing that element being inserted into our town plan uh, with, you know, in an appropriate way that's there's, there's going to be the town plan aspect of it, and then it's going to feed into this whole bigger, bigger exercise across the town. I mean, we're going to help people plan. That's, that's what we do. Okay. Yeah, Bob?
I guess to that end, if we're going to help people plan, I want to kind of keep our, keep our eye on the ball. Uh, if this, if this uh, is just a, a point of discussion tomorrow in the select board and that, but then potentially before our next meeting becomes something that they uh, like vote or decide to form or whatever, I guess it uh, I mean, I guess we should all pay attention and be ready to uh, kind of encourage other parties, like maybe that are more less planning, more directly active uh, like DPW or, or fire police or whatever that, you know, could see the value of uh, of, of planning and just kind of be ready to uh, I mean, give friendly encouragement to uh, you know, nudge it along if uh, I, I mean, not knowing what will, what the outcome of the meeting will be tomorrow, but, but then it might go through full cycle. I'd hate to be here a month and like, okay, what do we do now if uh, they decided it wasn't worth the, worth the effort? So.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm curious. I mean, all, as far as I went was, like I said, a, a couple of suggestions on the subcommittee forum of membership, and it was just select board, planning commission and town manager, department heads or something like that. So I think.
As much as it's, yeah, as much as it's item thirteen or whatever, I, I guess, it'll be interesting to see how it plays out since it'd be the first iteration of the, or the first time through the.
Yeah. Yeah. And, and um, we can that, they may simply, you know, uh, approve it as a, as a subcommittee. I gave them my name and Christian's name. So I mean, they could, they could do, they could say who on the select board wants to be a party of this? And Brennan, do you want to be a member of it or, and boom, make one. So we, we could, we could find ourselves day after tomorrow with a, with an active subcommittee. I don't know.
If, if it, so that, that could happen even if it isn't an agenda item, I guess, I guess.
Uh, good, good point, actually. That, that may, it may just be accepted as correspondence and then create an agenda item off of that. Jeff?
Yeah, yeah, I know. But to the extent you're awake when this comes up, and I probably won't be with my Parkinson's. Uh, you know, Norwich Fire District membership, uh, Trails Committee membership, Conscom membership, Historic District membership. There, there are a bunch of folks with uh, uh, interests. We don't have a Bike Ped Committee anymore, but if we did, I'd say them too.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. The obvious, the obvious big money spender, so to speak, uh, or big items, uh, you know, are, are, would be good to include. Yep. Okay. That's good. I mean, I, I think it's an important issue and it's a new topic. So let's, I agree with Jeff to, it's a, it's a big enough topic. It's a new topic. Let's, let's take it slow and get it right at the beginning rather than get ahead of ourselves. Okay. Um, next item is approve minutes.
Who to approve?
Uh, okay. Second, second, Ernie. Uh, okay, second, second, Ernie. Um, the one thing I had was in the ten eight minutes, it says, uh, it should, it should read, we approved the nine twenty-four minutes. Not, I think it says nine ten or something like that.
Yeah.
Should be nine twenty-four. And it's weird, it's, it's in the previous agenda item, the, the vote. Under six, capital planning, it says Goodrich moved seconded by Pape to approve the minutes with changes. So that sentence should be in item seven, I think.
Yes.
Um, and then it's, it's the minutes for nine twenty-four, not nineteen. Any other discussion or amendments to the minutes of nine twenty-four? Okay. All those in favor of approving as amended?
I agree.
Great. Thank you. Uh, unless the public has snuck into your room, uh, we don't have public on Zoom that I can see, so. Hearing no public comment, I will get to a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you all and welcome, Stephen.
Thank you. It's nice to meet you guys. And I do want to say, you know, if you have, anytime you want to talk, I'm available. I would love to hear from all of you. Um. And anytime.
So two questions and Stephen on that. Uh, one, are you typically in the office, uh, all the time? Are you, what, what are your hours?
I'm in, I'm in the office, uh, nine to five. We've posted new office hours, ten to four.
Okay.
Every day of the week. Um, depending, I I've had a thought about maybe one day a week doing uh some evening hours, if um you know, depending on, I guess, sort of the, the flow of building permits.
Yep, understood.
Just to accommodate, you know, people who work nine to five outside of zoning.
Yep. Okay.
But yeah, I'm, I'm available in the office.
All right, good. And then my only other question was, uh, I've been calling you Stephen. Stephen, Steve, you got a preference?
I don't. I'm happy either way. I answer to both of them. I introduce myself to Stephen and I let the universe take it from there.
All right, all right, everybody. Have a good night. Talk to you soon. Stay warm. It's finally feels like November out there. Now you guys need to stop the recording because you are the host.
Yeah. Great. Um, I will.
Good night all.
Thanks.